Fifth, Councilmember Raul.
President.
Councilmember Gums.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gillett.
Here.
Councilmember Reeves.
Accountant Hor.
Councilmember Khalid.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Also present is Mayor Edwards, City Manager Mr. Donald, and City Attorney Ms. Walker. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll have our invocation and think about Chaplain. And then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and to all present. Pastor Dr. Gregory Paul will be here as our guest today, but due to the fact that he's not here, because of our Chaplain program, our Chaplain cadet, Pastor McKee is going to come and render us with our invocation. If we all can please stand.
Thank you, Chaplain Henry. Let us look unto the Lord. Lord, we just thank you for this day within our city, within our state, and within our nation. We come to you asking for guidance this afternoon on the things a city will encompass each and every day. We come to you asking guidance to make decisions that will help the lives of ours and others within the city of South Fulton. And Lord, we just ask that you look upon our first responders tonight. You look upon our employees.
Yes.
And the citizen of this great city.
Yes.
And we will give you the praise, and we will tell the world that you've done this, not ourselves, and we will give you all the glory. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty, as it is taught.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation, I mean, presentation and announcements, a proclamation recognizing Beverly Howard.
Harvard.
This is Chief, um, Chief Meadows on the floor. He wants to say something.
Oh, yeah? Yeah.
We're coming to the close of the shortest month of the year, which is also Black History Month. And what I try to do is look within our community for someone who has made a substantial contribution and made history during this month. Last year, we honored the first African-American female sheriff in the nation. Well, we have another person in our community who's a resident and who has made a significant contribution to law enforcement, who has laid the ground for women in law enforcement, and who has stood as a role model for people like me in dealing with controversy, with class, and getting through it. And I thought it was more than appropriate for us to look to our community to honor the first African-American Atlanta chief. And so, her name is Beverly Harvard. And she is a City of South Fulton resident. And whereas Beverly Harvard began her distinguished career in 1973 as a patrol officer and has served in a number of positions within a department, including breaking ground as first female officer assigned to the male-dominated Executive Protection Unit, served in position of Director of Public Affairs, and was department's spokesperson. She became the highest-ranking female police officer in the country when she was elected as Deputy Chief of Police. While Deputy Chief, she commanded three divisions of the department. And whereas Beverly Harvard was elected Chief of Police in 1994, as Police Chief, she was responsible for the overall operation of the largest municipal law enforcement agency in the state of Georgia, with 2,300 police officers, civilian employees covering five divisions. And whereas Ms. Harvard was Atlanta's Police Chief, when the city hosted the 1996 Centennial Olympic Games, she was Joint Chairperson of the Olympic Security Support Group with responsible for coordinating security efforts between federal, state, local, private agencies for the world's largest peacetime event. And whereas, on July 28, 2010, Beverly Harvard was nominated by President Barack Obama and confirmed by the United States Senate on September 29, 2010, to the position of United States Marshal. On October 20, 2010, she was sworn in as the United States Marshal for the Northern District of Georgia, and as such is the top executive for the United States Marshal Service in the district. Marshal Harvard is the first African-American female to be appointed to the position of the United States Marshal. And whereas, Ms. Harvard received numerous awards, including being named Woman of the Year by the CBS Morning Show, she received the SCL's Drum Major for Justice Award, the Turner Broadcasting Systems Prestigious Trumpet Award, and was named one of Georgia's 100 Most Influential People by the Georgia Trend Magazine. She has been featured in several national Christian Science Monitor, Women's World, and Ladies' Home Journal, and she has appeared on local national television, including ABC's Good Morning America, CBS's Morning Show, NBC's The Today Show. And whereas Beverly Harvard, trailblazing endeavorer, as the first black woman in the nation to be appointed United States Marshal, as well as being the first in other public safety avenues, has encouraged other women to join public safety career, and is evidenced by the number of black women who serve in law enforcement across the country today. Now, there it be resolved, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of South Fulton congratulates Beverly Harvard on her service and contributions to the citizens of South Fulton, Georgia, the city of Atlanta, the nation, and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 25, 2020, as Beverly Harvard Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia. Congratulations.
You want some water? I got it. Oh, Chief Meadows is going to say something first. Okay. Okay, Chief, over to you. This is Chief Meadows. I'm so sorry that I wasn't able to make it today. I'm actually in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, away on business, but they're honoring you there for one reason today, and I have to honor you every day for a completely different reason, and it's what you've meant to my career for the 34 years that I've been in law enforcement. You always made sure I had the very best training, and you stayed on me about pursuing my education. And without Chief Harvard doing that for me, I'm not a chief of police today. And I tell everybody that's willing to listen that story. I don't know why Chief Harvard, Blanche Nichols, and Thaddeus Knopf looked out for me when I was coming up through the ranks, but I thank God for you all every day because you did, I'm able to serve the citizens of South Fulton with distinction today. So, I just wanted to thank you so much for everything that you've meant to me over the course of my career, and this proclamation could be more deserving of another person.
Well, thank you so much, Chief, and you really truly deserve everything that has happened to you in law enforcement, and thank you for continuing to provide the great leadership for the Police Department here in our city.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor Edwards.
You ain't crying, are you? You know, I've known Beverly Harvard for a long time, and one thing I always said when she was on the police force, as good-looking as she was, she could arrest me any time. Well, hell no, we too old to be arrested now, but I know her husband sitting there. I'm still going to take, I was at Mohaw. But, you know, what a deserving honor for you, Beverly, and I'm so happy that you're here in the great city of South Fulton where you made your roots and be part of this community. I told her today, I said, everywhere I go this month, I'm running into somebody honoring you and Eldon Bill. But both of them deservedly so. And you don't have to put this in perspective, you're talking about a police force where African-Americans could not even arrest white people. And then you're here with this sensational, phenomenal woman, who not only is the fact that she's an African-American, but she is a woman, and she was able to overcome all that to be one of the best, not only in Atlanta, but Beverly Harvard, one of the best in the nation. So, thank you so much, Ms. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Let me just say, this is such an honor, and so I want to thank you, Mayor, and the City Council, the entire City Council, for this honor. I can truly say that I really enjoyed my career in law enforcement, and that includes being the U.S. Marshal, ending it being the U.S. Marshal for the Northern District of Georgia. I just retired, in fact, it's been a year, a year ago, in January, and as I reflect back on my career, there are so many people that I too, that came before me, not females, but males, that I had as mentors that helped show me the way. But the most important thing was to allow or have the confidence in a female to put me in leadership position, because you have to put it back in perspective. When I became Deputy Chief of Police, again, there was not another me in the country. When I became Chief of Police, there was not another me in any major city. And I've got to tell you that, you know, oftentimes, whatever position you're in, you have peers that you can just talk to, to talk things through. That was the one thing I did not have. Very quickly, I would go to, just say, the International Association of Chiefs of Police meetings, and I would oftentimes be the only female there. And truly can say, was ostracized by many of my counterparts, and so it was a lonely place to be, but I knew it was something that I wanted to do. The thing that really guided me, and I never forgot, and I told myself practically every day that I was Chief of Police, was that I cannot fail at this. If I fail, it will be, darling, how long before any other city would appoint a female to that position? So, my guiding force was, I can't let these other women in law enforcement, not just here in Atlanta, but around the country, I can't let them down. So, that was the thing that really motivated me every day that I was in that position, because I felt that I was not doing it just for myself, but I had so many other women in law enforcement around the country who I was doing this for, and many of them would write to me and tell me how motivating that was, and that was the thing that kept me going. So, I can stand here today, again, and say that I am proud of my career in law enforcement. I'm glad that I chose a career in law enforcement, and again, I want to thank the Mayor, the members of the City Council, and you, the residents of South Fulton, for this honor today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a picture.
One, two, three.
Don't you come on down, Bill.
I got it.
Right, get down.
You notice, you don't go down there, you don't see me down there.
It ain't working.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of the Council agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Hold on. Ms. Gil, go why she's doing that, go ahead.
I would like to pull the IGA from the consent agenda, because I have a question.
Which Ida?
Page 286.
What question?
Yes, transfer of assets.
And this is the one that's in front of us, correct?
That's the, yeah.
Did you take, you took my thing?
Yes. So, items on the agenda for the Development Authority, Attorney Walker. Did you ask her to correct that? Because that was not my legislation. I sent you an email, I sent everybody an email on February 12. You said you didn't get it.
The legislation does have your name on it. It's not correct on the agenda.
So, I sent you an email, it was copied with Diane, and also with...
What'd you ask for?
It should be the Mayor and Corrie's legislation.
Yes.
So, my understanding from the clerk's office is they were going to designate those two individuals as the sponsors.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so can you correct? Okay.
That's good. Any other corrections? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, no, I have, I have two. One, I would like to add the City Attorney's report after the City Manager's report, and I would also like to remove items nine through 31 from the consent agenda.
Nine through 31?
Yes.
Why would you? We need to remove nine through 31 from the agenda. Is your intention to vote on these individual?
No, no, we can vote on them all together, but I do have questions about, well, we can't vote on them all together. The 18 employment contracts, we can vote on together, but the resolution for Cherry Street Energy, we can vote on separately, and we can actually keep the True Colors, they can stay on there.
Well, we got to get a better understanding.
Okay, so, so we have, we have 23 contracts on the consent agenda that we will vote for without any discussion. One of them for Cherry Street Energy is 275 pages by itself. So, I would like to ask some questions about the contracts before we just vote for all 23 contracts without discussion.
Well, I will say this, that these contracts that we have for the arts facilities are contracts that have been consistently honored at the facility to keep them going, and we was concerned about, can we keep the arts facility going without any interruption? So, that's why I continue to put them on here. These are the same contracts they had.
So, the 18 contracts, Mayor, for the 18 contracts for these contractors are actually different, and I would like to ask a question about those. We can vote on all 18 of those contracts together. I don't, I have no problem after I have these questions answered, making a motion to approve all 18 at once.
Mayor, we are prepared to answer any questions related to anything on the consent agenda or otherwise.
Okay. But yes, anyone sit in the room?
I'm just... The solar...
Let me see.
And so, the solar, the agreement for Cherry Street Solar Energy, isn't that, I'm just asking the City Manager, that's the one that we had a 30-minute discussion on in the work session, correct? Okay, all right.
So, for clarity, for me, Madam Clerk, because he's saying from nine to 31, and then he's saying something else, could you confirm?
Councilmember Gillett has already pulled number 10.
Right.
And I believe Councilmember Khalid said he was okay with 11 and 12 staying on the consent agenda.
11 through 13.
11 through 13 staying on the consent agenda, so items 14 to 31 will be moved to the regular agenda. Am I correct?
And item number nine.
And along with item number nine.
Yes.
Doesn't it have to be approved?
Huh?
Doesn't it have to be approved?
Yes, I need to vote. So, the motion, we need a motion to add the City Attorney's report after the City Manager's report, pull items nine, 10, 14 through 31 to the regular agenda.
Let me do it this way, let me, let me vote for the... Okay, well, I'm trying to hear you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll make that motion, I understand the motion, but I had an appointment to the Finance Committee that was submitted to the clerk.
I was ready to.
Darian Murphy.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was adding.
I didn't understand, what was that?
He wants to add Council appointment, Councilmember Baker, to the Finance Committee, Darian Murphy.
Oh, that's fine.
Right.
So, what I was about to say is, just deal with them individually? All right, so the first one is to remove, yes, yes, because for clarity reasons, I'm still a bit confused.
Well...
We can start one by one. I was looking to make the motion.
No, you don't have to do that. The motion be exactly what he said. Let's just do the first one first. Call that.
We're trying to approve the Council agenda with the change of adding the City Attorney to the agenda.
After the City Manager's report?
After the City Manager's report.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve that change.
Properly move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All right, that passes four votes. The other one?
The other one is to add Councilmember Baker's appointment of Darian Murphy to the Finance Committee.
Second.
I like...
Motion second.
I'd like to make a motion to add Darian Murphy to the Finance Committee.
Properly move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
The next change is to move items 14 through 31 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
I make a motion to pull items nine and change from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Stand second. Properly move the second, any discussion? All those in favor? That passes four or three.
The next change is to move items 14 through 31 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Can I make a motion to move items 14 and 31 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda to all be voted on together?
Good.
Properly move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yes.
That passes. All right.
Next item is to approve the Council minutes, Council's work session minutes for February 11, regular meeting minutes for February 11, and special call meeting for February 14.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Council work session minutes from February 11, the Council regular meetings for February 11, 2020, and the Council's special call meeting for February 14.
Second. Properly move the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing. The first item is Z19-006 for public hearing seeking a modification and rezone of AG1 to CUP for residential subdivision, community development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item that we have this evening is an update. This item was deferred at our January meeting. Mayor and Council directed us to go back and work with the applicant and work with the staff to come up with a revised plan, so I wanted to share that information with you this evening. The site plan is included in your packet. In working with the applicant, we have revised the amenity area so that it will include a playground, a mail kiosk, and a gazebo. In doing so, they will no longer require any variances to any of the code of ordinances. They're able to meet all of this on-site. Here is a close-up of what they're proposing as well. The other thing Mayor and Council had asked us for was to get a sense of what the buildings, excuse me, the residences would look like in the neighborhood, so we have included that information in your packet as well. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. The applicant is here also to answer any questions that you may have.
What I'll do is I'll open the public hearing. Where is the applicant? All those for and against come up. Against over here, for over here. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jordan Edwards, 3500 Lenox Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30326. With me here tonight is Joe Curley. He's with Curley Family Homes, they're the applicant. In this case, they'd also be the developer and the home builder on this property if the rezoning is approved. And our engineer, Jeff Smith, is here as well, if any of your questions are too technical for me. Allison did a great job summarizing this project. The property is at a southeast corner of Cascade-Pentland Highway and Stubbs Road, is a little bit more than 38 acres. There are three large subdivisions around, in the area around the property. Across Cascade-Pentland Highway is legacy Pentland Farms. To the east and north, across Stubbs Road, is the Amherst Neighborhood, and then to the south, on the other side of a creek that's on the property, is the Walden Park Neighborhood. All those subdivisions are zoned to the commercial community unit plan, the Cup District, that's the district that we're requesting today. The houses, the house sizes and the lot sizes are all very similar to what are already existing in those subdivisions. So, we think that the proposal makes a lot of sense and is similar to what's in the area. It's supported by the comprehensive plan, those zoning requests, so everything lines up. The moment we were here before, on January 28, we received the feedback that you all gave us about our site plan. We set up a meeting in the days and weeks after the City Council hearing and discussed those, the site plan with staff, and made some changes that Allison's mentioned. We replaced that basketball court with the amenity area. We've also made some alterations to the front setbacks to, in order to allow the full front setback stagger that we know is important to the city. So, with those changes, we can still build the size houses that I know is important to the neighboring subdivisions around us. It was important to them that the houses that we build are similar to those that they already have. And so, with the changes that we put on the new site plan, the changes that the revised conditions that come to y'all tonight from staff have, all of that's possible. So, staff has recommended approval. I would also ask that y'all approve this, subject to the conditions that staff has recommended to you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else for or against? Anybody for or against? If not, I'm going to close the hearing.
All right.
Who's the...
I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning Z19-006 for this... I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning Z nineteen dash zero zero six for this subdivision and following staff recommendation.
Second. Properly move the second discussion, Ms. Gilliard?
I want to know whether or not, I think when it was first presented, there was only one entrance and exit, so has that changed?
No, ma'am, that, that part has not changed. There is one full entrance and ex, full access entrance and exit. There is also going to be an emergency exit that will comply with all state, local regulations.
So, describe that emergency exit.
That'll be off of the highway side of the property. It will be essentially just available for emergency vehicles to use. There are weight standards and other regulations that control the degree to which it's developed, and it will comply with all of those. It'll only be accessible to fire trucks and those kinds of vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Well, I have a couple. I know that it meets all the requirements, but I'm going to join Ms. Gilliard, because I don't like subdivisions with one-way in and one-way out. I don't care if you call the other one an emergency or whatever you call it. I have a problem with that. The second thing, and let me just say, ladies and gentlemen, to people up here, I ask for the elevations. These elevations look like every house that we have in South Fulton. And I think that sometime, as developers come around, we're going to have to change something, because looking at all, you gave me about four or five different illustrations, but we got them same houses here right now. And I think that we need to do something to change that. We want, as we move forward into the city, we want to have an array of houses that look differently, you know, have curb appeal, don't have one-way in and one-way out. So, that's just my unreadiness, Ms. Gumb, but.
Well, those are some of the things, Mayor, that we are talking about with the design that the community development and regulatory affairs are working on, so those things will come. I think one thing to at least commend this builder on is that he has.
I appreciate you working with the community. I, I hope more developers will take that approach when bringing projects, so thank you for that and hearing the concerns that were raised at the previous work session. One of the things, and it's not directly related, but I would encourage the staff to bring back some kind of recommendation to the board for us to consider whether it be expedited, permitting, or something for those developers who bring that innovation and diversity and standards. I think that would go a long way in terms of attracting that to the city, so please take notes, staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's vote. One, two, three. Okay, that passes. Is it, was it four, three? Did you get it, four or three? Did you get the vote?
It was majority.
It was majority? Okay, good. All right. Thank you, sir.
Next item, public hearing, M nineteen oh oh seven, seeking a modification for a condition requiring a seventy-foot lot width at the building line on five lots.
All right, good evening. I will walk through these slides to share the information. This is for a project called Bedford Estates off of Thaxton Road. You can see the zoning map here, the site plan that they have submitted with this application. This is requesting a modification to the original case, which was Z two thousand and three one zero two. Condition three A outlines the minimum dimensional requirements, including the minimum lot width at the building line of seventy feet. The applicant is asking for various reductions for five of those lots to vary the, the building line anywhere from forty-seven feet all the way up to about sixty-six feet. Staff does recommend approval of the, the modification to allow for the reduction of the lot width on the five properties, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I do believe that the representative of the applicant is also here this evening.
I'll open up the public hearing. Those for and against, please come up to the microphone. Then you said the developer was here? Are you the, who's the developer? Who's the builder, whatever?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so my name's Kevin Hornbuckle. I'm Land Development Manager with Century Communities. I've worked on this as, basically, the bottom line on these lots is, due to the elevation changes, the topographical stuff and the building line, is to pull these homes forward to be of minimal, you wouldn't even really be able to tell, is what we're doing is trying to make sure that they have the maximum backyard, and, and each one of these homes, it's in the very back of the development too, so it wouldn't be like some noticeable change to these for this future phase, so, and I'm putting in any questions.
How many houses?
It, it would be five lots.
Five lots, okay.
Yes, sir.
One-way in?
No.
I'd like it five lots of one-way in, I don't have a problem with that.
We got more than.
We got more than one-way in.
Yeah.
All right. He got five, he got two entrances, so, something wrong with that, but anyway. I'll, I'll, anybody against this particular zoning? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning M one nineteen dash zero, excuse me, M one nineteen dash zero zero seven for, for Bedford Estates.
Properly move the second, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Next item is public comments. Speakers will be granted a toll of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their addresses prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer, shall observe all rules of decorum, no debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. Mayor and Council, we have a toll of six speakers for this evening. As I call your name, please line up at the podium. Harry King, Juliet Rankins, Jewel Johnson, Jan Williams, and Joyce Jones.
Harry King, four oh three five Lindy Lane, City of South Fulton, and I'm District Three. Ironically, I come before you on Black History Month, speaking to you concerning environmental injustice, defined as the disappropriate exposure of communities of color and the poor to pollution and its effects on health and the environment. The people invoke the name of Commissioner Emma Donnell, who understood the true meaning of injustice against people of color. The subject matter here today is the advanced disposal, advanced disposal, welcome-all transfer station, five-two-two-five Welcome All Road, three-oh-three-four-nine. The people of the city demand the immediate shutdown of this facility. In a next-door poll, ninety-nine voters voted to close it down, and three said no. I'll read from a neighbor of mine who has been active in the closure of this facility, and he states, "I have been living five hundred yards from this station for over seventeen years, and it's getting worse every year. The smell comes, makes you sick, nauseous, the trucks tear up Welcome All Road year round, and they are not good neighbors. They have broken down trucks parked around the property with God knows what kind of rats and rodents that live in them. Worst part is all the trucks that come to and leave the site allows trash to be blown all over the neighborhood, and even after the Public Works Department has cleaned the streets up, they sit behind these trucks at the red light with your air conditioning on, sucks the smell into your car. I have to keep spray air freshener in my car at all times, so I won't go anywhere smelling like garbage. Enough is enough to time to do something for the residents and immediately close this facility down."
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Juliet Rankins, District Four. We have here a new gang of four. We had an old gang of four, and now we have a new gang of four. And what I wanted to say to you guys is, basically, what we're looking for is what I'm looking for, I'm ADOS, and I am for the lowest and the least of these. That's who my concern is, the lowest and the least of these, that's who ADOS are. And we're looking to see how this new gang of four is going to harm us, basically, how are they going to harm the citizens? And I know you're saying, "We don't want to harm you at all," but some of the things you've already done are basically harming the citizens of the City of South Fulton. When you give development deals to Fulton County and not to the city, and we don't get the funds from it, that harms us. So, you have already started on the road to harming us, gang of four, okay? So, basically, you also harm us when Councilwoman Gums talks about gentrification and how good it is, and then she totally denies it, and it's on video, November twelfth, Councilwoman Gums, you speaking from the dais, okay? So, you did say that. It is on video, but we deny what we have on video. We found that out at the hearing when stuff was on video, and you totally just denied it, okay? So, we are looking at you, yes, you're under a lot of scrutiny, because we're trying to see what else you're going to do to harm us? How are you going to harm us? That's what you guys are doing. And you have all the fire for the people sitting up here, Councilman Collette, you got all the fire for him, but you don't have any fire for Keisha, who trying to take FIP from you, no fire. The mayor's, "Oh, she didn't hear what I said." No, because they have an agenda, and you have no fire for them. You have no fire for Fulton County? Put the fire where it should be, and not against your own council members who are working to help the citizens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jewel Johnson, four to six sixty.
Stop the clock.
You're not stopping the clock.
Yes, we are.
Miss Johnson, you want some more?
Look at her. Jewel, you want to wait a minute, then we'll come back to you?
I'm allergic to dust, with dust.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, she got some.
I'm healthy, I went to the doctor last night.
You can go on.
That's what I was saying, she can go on. You love a cough drop? Go ahead.
Can we clean this out before? She got it. It's wet up the door.
All right.
Jane Williams, six-two-seven-six, I'm in Brentwood Place, six-two-seven-six Shinfield Lane, Union City, Georgia. I'm in District Five, but I'm speaking today on behalf of Commissioner Joe Carr. We need everyone to come out on Saturday, February the twenty-ninth, between the hours of ten a.m. and two p.m. for, we need all citizens, elected officials, mayors, and especially our South Fulton Complete Count Committee. We will be planning, organizing, and strategizing how to reach the hard-to-count committees, community, communities. And I have a flyer, it will be out in the foyer, in reference to reaching hard-to-count communities, and we will have food to serve, okay?
Okay.
Thanks. Thank y'all.
Why don't you hold the mic in your hand? Just hold it, Jewel. Again, back off.
Jewel Johnson, four to six sixty, Orkney Lane, District One. I humbly come before Mayor and Council this evening, because as a citizen, I have strong concern regarding House Bill nine twenty-one. That bill was, has never come before the public, for our opinion. It's a bill that gives the mayor absolute power over the legal process. With a bill like this, there is no checks and balance. I'm here this evening to humbly ask you to, ask the board to reject this bill. I want to know, what is the urgency to change the charter now? When the charter states clearly, after five years, there has never been any discussions with the community as it relates to doing this right now. I am suggesting that we don't do this, because it is not in the best keepings of the charter that we have. We are backdoing changes, because you know that charter legally cannot be changed. You can amend it, but you can't change it. So, it will only cause more problems for us. So, what I'm asking you to do is tell the elected officials that are processing that to stand down, because the people is not wanting that. And I have talked to people in all over this, this city who agrees with me, that this is not what we are asking for. And I hope that you are listening, and that you will listen to the people that supervises you. You are employees. We are not, we are not in the business of making kings and queens in this city.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Joyce Jones. I live sixteen eighty-eight New Hope Road, and I just want to say, I am not in favor of Bill nine twenty-one that gives the mayor all the power, that gives the mayor all the power, to the mayor, to do anything that he likes. It should be checks and balances. This is a democracy. He should not be able to do anything that he feels that he wants to do, that it should be checks and balances, and no one man should have that much power. And I remember the first day that I came to the first meeting, when Roger Bruce stood right up and said that the reason he spent ten years tried to make South Fulton a city so that his children, his grandchildren, and his great-grandchildren would become wealthy, so I hope that that's not the reason that the mayor and all of you are not up there changing all the rules and the regulations, so that all of your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren would be wealthy too. So, I want all of you to stand up and fight for the people, and be here for the people, and not for yourself. Be here for the people of South Fulton, because we need you to stand up and be here for the people, and don't be here for yourself. Don't just do anything and take anything, because we need, this is a black city, and we need you to act like you're going to support the people, all the old people that's in the city. Don't raise taxes. Don't, don't do everything just because these people coming in here shelling out money. Don't just come in here and take up money, just give them out all these kind of, different kind of bills and take everything that they're offering, because that's not helping us. That's not helping the people in South Fulton. That's not helping the old people in South Fulton. That might be helping you, but that ain't helping us. So, stand up and do what you being selected to do. Help the people in South Fulton. Don't help yourself, help us.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that it? Is that it?
Ms. Council, that ends the public comments for this evening.
I want to acknowledge again Chairman of Fulton County, who's back, Mr. Rock Pitts. He brings us good news. Westlake Girls just won tonight.
Yay!
Two more, we give a three-peat. All right, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the CFO's financial report, presentation on January twenty-twenty financial report.
Counselor don't have cards?
No.
Why did you do that?
Because it's too much.
Okay, I would like to have a corner for them, Mr. Mayor.
No, just let him do his thing. Just let him do his thing.
And when he can finish, I still need a point of order because I need to make an announcement. Okay, well, I need a point of order when he's finished.
Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. We are presenting the 2020 January, end of January fiscal status. So in here, we are showing that the month of January, we had $25 million to the good, 25 million over the expenditures that we had. We received $42 million and we spent $17 million. So you may see that 25 million extra is a lot of money, but you have to know that most of this money, we've got them through October, November, December. That's the time we get all our taxes. So we have to stay with this money. We have to make sure that we do the best we can do to preserve until September. So it may look a lot of money, but it's not. It will be slowly catching up with the expenses. Our expenditures, you'll find out that by that time, we have collected 57% of our revenues. And our expenses are less by 9%. So instead of expenses being 32%, they are within 23, 24%. There are several reasons and most of those ones is postponing or deferring some of the capital projects, also to include the freezing of personnel. It worked very well last year and it's working very well this year as well. This is a summary of expenses, revenues as well as expenses. So we have about 42 revenues and we have 16 or 17 million of expenses with $25 million that have stayed as the over beyond the expenses. High notes of revenues, you'll find out that in October, November, December, our property tax revenue, we are counting about 80, 70, 60%. But as time goes by, you'll find out that in January, we saved 9%. 9% counted for taxes in January. That means the other revenues are taking over. You'll find out that is 46% of our January revenues came from sales tax. TIS plus from October up to, to date, we have received $4 million. That's in addition to what was transferred last year from Fulton County. And with this, we have revenues are making good strides to make up for the expenses that we have projected for 2020. Then here is the summary of different revenues. Here you find out that we have property tax. And this property tax, we have several taxes, motor vehicle taxes, but these are just summaries. And it shows what percentage of each one of those. Property tax counts for 54%. And the other big one will be the local option sales tax, 17%. Then we have another 17% of other, these are from various other sources of revenues. So together, they come up to 100% and it's $42 million. So this is the breakdown of our revenues. 31% is property tax. And the 31 million that we budgeted for, but so far, we have corrected 23%, 23 million. And for our local sales, we budgeted for 25 million, we have received 7 million. We are one month behind on sales tax. Then we have other revenues. Summary of revenues, general fund is $42 million that we have received. In January, we received 12,840 for restricted grants. We also received 1.1 million from, from capital grants. And most of these ones are from, for public works. Then we save $17 million on that U R A. And then we have received 87 on Solid West. So still a total of in January, 24 million dollars. Out of that 24, majority of that one was for general fund. Total receipt in January was the, as of January 30th, 31st was $65 million. Expenditures, expenditures, we are lower than expected. We're supposed to be at 32, but 24% so far. And the U R A, we closed the 31st December and we received $17 million. We paid according to our schedule, 284 so far on time, February 1st, we paid that one. As this is summary of our expenses, we take the, our elected officials as a department or as district with 24%. Then we have the city clerk, we have the city manager. The last one is debt services at 24% of our expenditures with 57% of our revenues. And this is also on our expenses, the biggest chunk of our expenditures are only personnel. That's on personnel, we have 42 and on operation is $10 million. And then we have on operation is 26. So far, 26 budgeted, we have spent $6 million. And on personnel, we budgeted $44 million, we have spent 18, 10 million. This is just the same in chart form of 10 million on personnel, contracted all operations, 5.7, and supplies, 954, for a total of 16, 17 million. And the rest of these ones will be in details of what you have already seen there, but this is to do with taxes, different areas of tax, which is our main source of revenues. So this is just for your information. I will entertain any question or comments that you may have.
Mr. Khalid.
Okay, I, I see, thank you for your presentation. I see that 17% of our revenue comes from other taxes. Could you just give some examples of what those other taxes are?
So several taxes will be business licenses part of the tax, alcohol license will be part of tax.
Those aren't in the licenses and fees, which is the next line?
So it's a, actually, if you were at the meeting last time during the orientation, we talked about the details. So I will send you the details, what's composed in taxes so that you can have the details. Whatever we give you is in a summary form.
Okay, and then my, my next question would be, in the future, can we, can we split out commercial property taxes from residential property taxes?
It may not be part of the report, but we'll give you, because we'll be dissecting too much, but we can give you that report.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can give you that report, yes.
Okay, hearing nobody else in the, in the queue? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just really quick. Thank you for that report, Mr. Malazey. One thing I, I noticed in, in a hotel motel category, we know we have more Airbnb's operating than that. So can somebody speak to what we're doing with compliance to make sure that they pay their, their due taxes?
So finance we receive, but we have the, within finance, we have the inspector, but we have to work with a different jurisdiction to help us. We have to work with code enforcement. We have to make sure that whatever is out there comes to us, we get it. So community development services is part of the team that will enforce that we make sure we receive all our revenues.
Okay. Well, at, at, at a minimum, if we find out that they're listing online, I hope we would at least send them some kind of notification that they have a business license.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of doing that now. We have just gotten, which we've been waiting on for quite some time, the host compliance software. We're going through the orientation and implementation period. Ms. Reed can speak more to that, but that's going to automate the process for us and help us really comply with the resolution and ordinances that you put in place.
Thank you, so I'm just telling the public, you operate, we coming to get our tax money. Thank you.
So I'll add just a little bit to that. We've had a meeting, myself in chief, chief of the police department, have had a meeting with the host compliance company. That meeting intel information that they're needing from us and we're gathering that information and sending back to them. Once we send that information back to them, they're going to provide a report to us as to how many properties in the city of South Fulton that are listed on Airbnb, I think it's W R B O and all those properties. So once we have that list, code enforcement will then send our information, letting them know what our procedures are. From there, giving them X amount of days to have a license. They do not have a business license, we will then begin citing.
That is wonderful.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other people in the queue, I'm looking down. Thank you so much. We have two people have requested a point of personal privileges, that Mr. and Mrs. Gums and Mrs. Willis, two minutes apiece.
Two minutes apiece? Yeah, I don't, it won't take two minutes. Typically, we allow residents, public comments are allowed for residents to come and voice their opinion. And you know, you are allowed to say what you want to say, but what I do have a problem with when people make false statements. And so I want to clarify, and now that we have Chairman Pitts here, I want to say to you and Attorney Hooker, thank you for being great partners to me and District Three. Thanks to your partnership, your Fulton County Development Authority has ensured that we will get $27 million investment in our community for happenstance, $19 million investment in our community for workforce housing, and we will get over 50 jobs in our community. And we will get an opportunity for contractors to participate in the minority participation program. So that's what's coming to District Three. And if you have any further questions about the bond inducements that happen in District Three, please attend my town hall, which is Thursday at Welcome All Park at 6:30 p.m. And also subscribe to my newsletter because I have been very transparent about what is happening in District Three, which is the place to be. Thank you.
Ms. Gums? Ms. Gums?
So I can also sentiment some of Councilwoman Willis's comments. My issue is that when we have elected officials and we open ourselves up to be available for you and you all do not take that opportunity to meet with that elected official, it is a disservice. And this will be probably my last time speaking on this matter because this whole gentrification thing of coming up and saying what Councilwoman Gums is doing is just falsely, is just false. And I've given you several opportunities to come and meet with me. I'm readily available. And if you choose not to do it, then how can I help you understand exactly what it is? So for you to come and constantly say that I'm doing something improper and I don't even know what gang of four you're speaking of because I'm a gang of the city of South Fulton, if that's the better way of saying it. So again, I offer all of the residents, if they have concerns, to use and reach out to your elected officials and speak to your elected officials. But don't come up and always constantly saying something when you, we've opened ourselves up for that commentation. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next agenda, please.
And the item is the city manager's monthly report.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. I actually have four quick items for you. The bulk of this information is included in your over 200-page city manager report. I think the first item I want to highlight is that we have now updated the report as you requested to include updates on our procurement activities and spend. So that will align very closely with the recent item that we brought before you as we look at the disparity study. So that's now included and is in the current manager's report. The second item, I just wanted to highlight the responsiveness of our government. I think I mentioned briefly, but we got the update today that although we've only been implementing our Citizens Response Center and there are 600 like centers in the country, we rate in the top 10 of responsiveness, receiving approximately 20,000 issues and resolving about 18,500 of them, which is a 91% clip. So we have ranked as one of the more responsive governments, not only in metro Atlanta, but in the country. So we're really excited about that. The third thing that I'm also excited about, I know we have talked a lot about this universal master calendar and making sure that our residents have access to all of our events, not only the council events, but any general city activities. And so we have now come to an agreement with the South Fulton Observer, a local organization and media outlet who will partner with us to help house our city calendars. So we're really excited about that, not only because they have a readership of about 10,000 persons per month, but they're also local and homegrown. And so not only will we be housed on the South Fulton Observer, we'll have a mirrors, a mirror page on our site. So our residents will be able to get information and access it as never before. And so we're really excited to do business with those in our community. I would definitely give kudos to Dr. Rowell and also Councilmember Gums for, and Councilmember Khalid for just kind of highlighting the importance of having a master calendar and then looking at innovative and creative ways to do it. So I think this will satisfy that. And then the final piece, which I know you guys are going to be happy about, we have now moved forward in the final phase of our parks lighting upgrades. And so the remaining upgrades, and that is in page two of your city manager's report behind the cover, all of the upgrades for lighting are now in progress. Currently in progress is the South Fulton Tennis Center, Wilkinson Mill, and Santown. But we expect all parks to have lighting upgrades by the end of quarter three. And I think the, the final piece, you read it in the newspapers already, but our fire department has partnered with H R to provide these mental health courses and provide over 3,000 hours of training, I'm sorry, 2,600,000 in January, but already exceeding 3,000 hours of training for our firefighters, preparing them to provide world-class service and continue to move their I S O rating down. So we're excited about all of those administrative successes and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Next item is the city attorney's report.
The what?
This is an agenda, I think there were questions, because there were concerns that came up earlier. I mean, you've been, you've entertained my questions, I can't be one-on-one and we discuss what we need to discuss in executive session like you suggested. So I'm not.
Okay, I got Mr. Khalid in the, in the queue.
So I do have, I do have questions about House Bill 921, which I understand passed out of committee and is headed to the Senate. So it's on its way to becoming law that is about, well, could you please tell me what, what House Bill 921 is?
Before you go any farther, is that a part of your report? Because I'm asking for your report.
For the city attorney's report?
Yes.
That, that is not a part of the report.
Well, that's not germane.
So I mean, I, I don't have a report on that. I just opened this up. I know there were questions that came up. It's your discretion whether I answer those questions, Madam.
It's, it's whose discretion? Because I specifically asked for, that's why I specifically asked for you to.
Well, it's the council's discretion. I mean, I'll discuss it if, if that's your desire, but it's your collective call.
So I would like to make a motion to discuss House Bill 921, House Bill 965, and House Bill 986 that have been introduced at the state legislature without speaking to any of us to change our charter.
Mayor, point of order. I request a point of order.
Are we making that change to the agenda based on an emergency? If not being on as an emergency, then it's not germane and I will not accept it.
With all due respect, mayor, as the bill has passed the House and will be up for vote and will pass into legislation before our next council meeting, I do think that it is an emergency.
Madam, Madam Attorney?
Mayor, I call for a point of order.
Excuse me, I heard you, excuse me. And I'll get to you. My question to you, this, this is the same as the walk-on. And it says, "In the event of an emergency." Do you consider this discussion, which started with your discussion about your attorney, considered a, a situation? considered a, a situation where there's an emergency to walk onto this agenda?
So, I'm hesitant. I mean, I, I don't think it's my place to give you my opinion. I do have an opinion about the House bill, but I don't think it's my place to give you that opinion.
What does, no, no, ma'am. What does, the, the charter clearly says, I'm just telling you what the charter says. And I'm saying that it does not qualify for me as, as an emergency to be walked in now. It's clearly not a part of your discussion when we have the, when we have the, your City Attorney's Report. It was clearly not a part of your discussion.
So, that is correct. I do not have a report that I've repaired to advise the council on those House bills. It's my understanding that one of the council members has asked me to report on it, and that's your call. If you guys collectively agree that we want to report on that, then I can answer it to the extent you have questions. If you don't collectively agree, then I don't plan to say anything.
Okay. Let me do this. If you have a point of order with Ms. Willis, and then we'll go to the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing my point of order. My point of order is, at the work session, Attorney Walker suggested that we discuss items that wanted to be discussed in executive session. The items that were supposed to be discussed in executive session was around litigation and the review of ordinance and resolutions that was in the pipeline. This discussion about what's going on at the General Assembly is not on the agenda and is not germane.
Mr. Khalid, you're in the queue.
Uh, I, I, there's just a motion on the floor. I think we're in discussion now. But I mean, I'm prepared to vote this. I'm prepared to vote.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Gilley, go ahead. We didn't have executive session. We didn't have executive session. We did not have executive session today.
We can have it afterwards. That's right. Yeah. Let's do that.
So, I, I think that it was a comment that, about it, there, there's some discussion during executive session, but we didn't have it today.
But we can have it afterwards.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. Just wanted to be recognized. Do I have a floor, sir?
Yes.
Okay. No, we didn't have an executive session, but the last time we were here, we were attempting to walk an item on at the very last, uh, item on the agenda. It wasn't germane, and it wasn't an emergency. And we just spoke earlier about transparency, and only two people who came up to the podium spoke about those House bills, which means the majority of the individuals here, as well as those individuals who are not present and probably viewing from home, may not have any idea what we're speaking of. And I think that we owe it to the public to not just go in the back to talk about a House bill that is passing and will pass before we, before them again. I think this, it's only fair to have that discussion. We're not going into any litigation, which would probably not allow us to discuss it in executive session anyway.
Right. Right.
Are you?
Okay. We'll hear from Ms. Rauw, and then we'll call, call for the vote.
I think we have, a number of people have opinions on this legislation. I think, I think we should try to find a way to have a conversation with the other parties, our delegation, to see if we can work through these issues. I think our citizens are looking for that level of leadership that we can get in a room and have a conversation face-to-face and discuss these bills that are pending in the General Assembly. And so, I would just ask my colleagues to let's figure out how to make that happen.
I think that's appropriate. I really think that's appropriate. We have a motion on the floor. Let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, I know we can call for a vote on the floor.
Well, let me just get the vote, let me, let me take care of the motion. The motion fails for lack of votes.
The motion is to discuss House Bill 921, 965, and 986.
Yes.
It was motion by Councilmember Khalid and seconded by Councilmember Baker.
And it failed for, for lack of four votes.
No, we didn't vote for it.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Could I add my point?
You should.
I just wanted to say, well, actually before the mayor called the vote, in respect to Dr. Rauw, this is going to be something that would have passed before we, before you again. And many residents are still in the dark and have no idea what we just didn't discuss. And this is our government, and this is the lack of transparency that some of you guys speak about often, and I think that it's unfair.
I will make it my duty to see that we, as urgently as we can, Mr. Baker, get, get that conversation done before there's anything done in the legislature. All right. Let's go.
At, Mayor and Council, at the request of Commissioner Rob Pitts, we would like to, he would like to know if it's permissible to move item number 10 to discuss it now.
I think I, I wouldn't have any problem with that, since it's under counsel that Mr. Pitts has been here.
Can I make a motion?
No. We just need, we need to, anybody have any issues?
Yes, we're mending the agenda in the middle of the meeting after we voted on the agenda, because we just had this process.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move item 10 up for discussion on the agenda concerning the IGA with Wolf Creek, Aberthia.
Where is it? It should be coming up.
Is that what it was, item 10? Is that, was that item 10?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
That passes.
Let me just say one thing. All my, all my time as an elected official, when one elected official visits a body, even in Fulton County, we give courtesy to that elected official because of his time and things of that nature to come up. So, I just want to make that clear, that in 19 years, that's what's always happened. Okay, Mr. Pitts? I mean, uh, listen, listen. Mr. Pitts, hold on.
It's council approval of IGA with Fulton County for the transfer of assets to the city of South Fulton and give the city manager and city attorney ability to negotiate Wolf Creek, city attorney.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move, I make, I make the motion to approve the IGA with Fulton County.
Well, it's the, if I could clarify, it's the resolution. Do you have the resolution? It says the resolution by the city.
I make the motion to approve the resolution by the city authorizing a property transfer in a governmental agreement with Fulton County, Georgia, for all other lawful purposes.
Second.
And can I put in there, just language, can I add to that? May I add to your motion some language?
Sure.
And that's approval subject, subject to clarification that we're confirming that Trammell Crowe is not impacted, the conveyance that we have established is not. Yeah, we're, we're in, we're scheduled to convey Trammell Crowe pursuant to a sublease that we executed previously. I just want to clarify that that's not impacted by this, and that.
Well, excuse me. I'm just trying to figure out, we're talking about Wolf Creek. Trammell Crowe is a different discussion, am I correct?
So, we're talking about all property conveyances. So, this is, this includes Wolf Creek, Transportation Center, Merck Miles, it's pretty much everything that we had in dispute.
You want to say something?
So, I think where, one way we may be able to simply settle that is Councilmember Gums, if you, in your motion, give us the authority to settle all pending property issues inclusive of Wolf Creek and Trammell Crowe, or any pending property transactions, that covers everything, and we can, we can then finish it. But I, I believe all of those things are already taken care of.
Come on.
Okay, good.
Hold on, let me, let's hear from the city, the county attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Patrice Perkins-Hooker, and I'm Fulton County's attorney. We have been in negotiations with representatives of your city for a long time on this agreement, and we finally did pass a version of the IGA that we sent over to your city attorney last week, signed by all of the respected officers of Fulton County. And this agreement covered what was in dispute. Now, the city attorney did let me know tonight that there was a concern about Trammell Crowe. I want to confirm on the record that we are already in the process of transferring Trammell Crowe. The only holdup was the fact that we had to pay off debt that was associated with it. That manifestation of our obligation to transfer is in your current lease with Trammell Crowe. We've never disputed the obligation to transfer Trammell Crowe and all property surrounding Trammell Crowe and the south, the Southwest Arts Center, all of those parcels are being transferred. So, I don't think that you need to address that. The concern that she raised to me was that the agreement did not reference that, it never referenced it because we weren't disputing it, and we were just waiting for November for the debt to be paid off. So, that is already being scheduled with a meeting with our Fulton County Corporation, with Facilities Corporation to transfer the title of us, and then in turn, transfer it to the city of South Fulton.
Thank you, Attorney Hooker, and let me.
And that'll happen in March.
Yeah. And so, Mayor, I think, again, that if your motion is to allow us to finalize the property conveyances and complete our business with Fulton County, it should cover any concerns that are there.
Let me get the motion correct. We need to, I'd like to have the motion restated to, to capture.
So, wait. So, can you, what is the last statement about settling of all Fulton County property conveyances?
So, it's pretty much, if you, if you look to, to section one, I think that covered, covers it for the most part.
I just need that one statement.
So, it would be the, I'll repeat it, it's a resolution by the city authorizing a property transfer IGA with Fulton County and for other, with Fulton County, and the language about us finalizing and executing, I think it is sufficient in here that, based on the representations that have been made by council tonight, that we're able to work those out and execute a final copy.
So, what do you want us to hear?
So, the last line should say what? Since we've already heard from city, from the county.
Disapprove the resolution, as, as you have, accept the resolution as written.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Say it.
And I'll second it. She already did it.
All right. Now, we're in discussion. Ms., Ms. Gilley, I'd go right ahead.
Okay. I have some.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry. I have some environmental concerns, and this is what they are. On page 294, it states that the city acknowledges that the county has disclosed that the property is adjacent to a closed landfill, which pollutes, which pollutants and hazardous material have been identified, and that they have leaked into the area of Wolf Creek, such that the county advises us to purchase environmental insurance, but this contamination is on the superfund site. So, I want to know how we're going to get insurance, and I want to know how we are going to handle it since it's, it's clearly stated in the document that it has leaked.
These questions, I know some of them we've gone over, and it's been a while, because we've been working on this for a while, but these are likely conversations we should have in executive session if there's additional detail to that matter. Those would not be public conversations.
Okay. Well, we need to have it. Okay. Any, any discussion? Go ahead.
It's a public document, though.
In my opinion, we, maybe we can, in my opinion, I think so.
Yeah, this is a public document, though.
But it is, but I, I think I would defer to legal on that, but I think I'd feel more comfortable having that come, personally, I'm not a lawyer, though, so I would defer to legal on that.
And your opinion, Madam Attorney?
I mean, normally, we have the real estate, real estate discussions in executive session. If there's going to be a level of back and forth or concerns where we are actually articulating what litigation risk may be in play, then I would recommend that we.
And I think that's what's going to happen. All right.
So, I, well, no, we're in discussion on the vote. I, I have a question about the flooding of bathrooms at Wolf Creek and the $1.3 million fund for maintenance that no longer exists. Is that something that we should discuss in executive session?
Yes. I would definitely discuss that, and I guess it would be subject to the extent that, you know, the county would discuss that, but I would definitely recommend that discussion in executive session.
So, do we need to table this vote until after executive session, at the end of the meeting? Or are we going to approve this contract now and then discuss what we approved in executive session?
Well, you can make a motion to temporarily recess this discussion to executive session.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, and you would be able to, to go talk about it and then come right back, or come out, like, you're discretion.
Hearing no motion.
I make a motion to temporarily go into executive se, whatever you said. Let's go to executive session and discuss this before we vote on it.
Hearing no second, that fails.
Oh, second.
Now, you just can't say second when you're getting ready, it's no. I think we did. That fails. Let's vote, Lee.
We're going to vote to a who?
That passes.
Motion to approve the resolution passes. Next item is to consent agenda items, approval of item number seven, eight, 11, 12, and
I think that was Mr. Khalid. Items eight?
Items number seven, eight, 11, 12, and 13.
That wasn't you. I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion. Is that what she looking for?
Yes, sir. To approve that, those items on the consent agenda.
A move that, a move that we approve item seven, eight, what'd you say?
11, 12, and 13.
11, 12, and 13.
Where am I, ma'am?
There's a second?
No, there's some more back here.
No, that's.
Okay, that's it.
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Property move, the second in discussion. All those in favor? All those in favor of voting on those?
Consent agenda items.
All right. Yeah, that's, that passes. Next item, please.
Next item will be item number nine, council approval of resolution and agreement for Cherry Street Solar Energy.
I move that we approve resolution and agreement for Cherry Street Solar Energy.
Second.
And property move, the second discussion?
I have discussion, but our city attorney is not in the room, so before we pass this 275-page contract, I would, I would like to have our city attorney present.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Uh, City Manager, I think from the last work session, there is no cost to this particular.
Yeah, so this operates just like Georgia Power or any other utility agreement that we would have. Actually, the city attorney and our purchasing officer work together to ensure, one, do we need to piggyback, can we enter into the agreement independently, et cetera, et cetera? And so, after a fairly lengthy review from our city attorney, which will allow her to confirm, she approved this agreement prior to her placing it on this agenda. And so, I would probably defer to her for any legalese or any legal decisions that they discussed. I think for us, programmatically, we look at it as a cost-saving activity that is connected to our utility spend and helping us become a smart city.
So, let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
So, what's the, what did Mr. Khalid get, the $200,000?
No, he didn't say thousands of dollars. He's talking about how lengthy the agreement is.
A lengthy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought I was talking about money.
And so, those have gone through the legal review, and I would just defer to her on why the agreement is so long and whatever decisions they made that were legal.
Sure. Ms., Mr. Reed, go ahead.
And, and I just have a qu, one question. The two facilities, just for clarity sake, the two facilities that this particular contract covers is for Sandtown and Welcome Mall Park?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I think it gives us the ability to choose the facilities. The cost doesn't change based on the facilities. Remember, they've done an initial assessment of all of the facilities. I think they just went back out to Welcome Mall and Southwest Arts Centers to assess the roofs there.
The two in this document says for Sandtown and Welcome Mall. The two in this document says for Sandtown and Welcome Mall.
Correct. Those are the two that are included there, but it allows us to actually choose.
To expand that.
So if, for instance, let's say the roof on Sandtown, the assessment came back that it couldn't withstand, et cetera, et cetera, we can change and say instead of Sandtown, use this facility and it would be fine. The terms would change.
And a change...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I think they went over, when you asked the question in the final, in the presentation, one of the questions that Mr. Khalid asked was when, if those, if anything was installed or anything related to the installation at any facility that occurred, would the city bear the cost? And that's not a cost for us, that's a cost on them.
Okay, that's done. Let me get to Mrs. Willis and then Mr. Baker, I'll give you.
And Councilmember Raul.
And, I'm sorry.
When we had a very lengthy and comprehensive discussion regarding this during a work session, what was stated is that because of the level of activity and the, and because of the size of the gym, they wanted to start with Welcome Mall Park and then their goal is to expand
That's correct.
throughout the city. And so that's what I remember.
Yeah, that doesn't change.
Okay.
All of those things are consistent.
Mr. Khalid, you have it? I mean, I'm sorry. That was Mr. Baker and then Ms. Raul.
I just have one question. Is this the only company that we've ever entertained for the energy saving?
Because I know I gave, I submitted something some time ago and there's a lot of incentives
that a lot of those companies provide that ultimately some even build stuff for you in your city, but of course, it's contingent upon how long the contract is. And I was just wondering how, what were the comps like that when it came to...
So I would just remind you of my previous presentation and the previous city manager's report. This is one of many activities related to helping us become a smart city. I won't, I'll call him out because he's here, but our good friend Stuart from Comcast is partnering with us on some other energy activities. There are about 10 other companies that we're talking to about different areas.
No, I'm speaking about when it comes to our facilities directly.
Correct, yeah. And so these are, all of these partnerships impact our facilities. So the trash can, the smart trash can program that we're talking about is one of them. That's one with Comcast. This is the first solar activity, but there are other alternative entities, alternative energy entities that we're also communicating with. So this is not a one-off exclusive...
And I totally hear what you're saying.
Then I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm just not following your question.
Okay, I mean, like for just this project, this type of project?
Okay.
This type of cost-saving effort?
Okay.
That's what I was asking.
What are you asking?
Have we entertained other comps?
Oh, so we, I mean, there are a variety of people who've sent us various information and we just assess them against each other. It's the same way they go through the various procurement processes, you know? You look, yeah, you just compare and contrast. And again, there are more opportunities that will be coming forward shortly.
Hey, Mr. Baker. Okay, did we get Ms. Raul?
I'm good.
Mr. Khalid, we'll get you, then we'll vote.
Thank you. While you were out, Madam Attorney, the question was asked if the only two facilities that are covered under this contract are Sandtown and Welcome Mall Park. Is it your understanding that those are the only two facilities and that if the roof on one of those facilities is not adequate, that another facility can be swapped out?
Okay, so that's two questions. One, is it applicable to only those locations? My understanding is that those are the two locations that these covers, but I think that administration would need to confirm that for me.
Yeah, what I told him was that, again, if there's no cost, no issue, as we went over in the previous agreement, if there's an issue with those two facilities, we can change out the facilities and there's no issue, we have to do it administratively. Second question, I think, that he was asking, well, I don't know if there's an additional question, but our understanding is that those are the two listed, those are the intended ones, but if for any reason we need to change those out, there is no issue or restriction. That's our standard.
So can you, can the motion be made to authorize this subject to us confirming that the concerns that you raised today that were addressed by the city manager are accounted for in the language?
Well, actually, I have a second concern. That is, can this agreement be expanded to other facilities without the notice or like consent by a majority vote of council? If it's just, I mean, because if it's just these two facilities, here is my concern. I do understand that we had this 30-minute conversation two weeks ago. I still don't feel like I learned everything I need to know about solar energy procurement in 30 minutes, but I did not get this contract until Thursday. It is 275 pages and I got it in addition to about 20 other contracts, including this one we just ran through for the IGA that we didn't discuss in executive session, and 18 personal contracts that we hopefully will get to ask a question or two about today before we pass. I don't know that three days is enough time to review 300-plus pages of legal contracts and, and sometimes I would just like to have more time. I have questions about the solar easements and the, the shading analysis performed at the purchaser's cost, that's our cost and acceptable to the seller in its sole discretion. I have questions about the utilities. The purchaser shall provide existing and available utilities to the facility site and any added facility site in connection with the seller's construction, startup, maintenance, repair, replacement, and operation of the facility or added facility. And I also have a question about taxes being imposed, the monthly energy-based payment and the increased include, to include taxes as purchaser agrees, purchaser as us agrees to pay the increased amounts. So I have questions about those things. However, if this is only going to be limited to these two sites and not expanded across the city without the consent of a majority vote of council, then I am fine. If the two people in these districts want to go ahead, if they feel comfortable with these 275 pages, I will vote with them. I just want to make sure that it is limited to these two sites because I didn't have enough time to review.
Okay. All right. Let's vote, please.
So I don't, I don't want to give you the impression that it's limited to those two sites. I mean, you asked a question...
So I'm making an amendment to my motion. I'm making an amendment to my motion to limit it to these two sites. Okay.
That good, Mr. Khalid?
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote.
I think that that is a real abrupt motion or move to make. I understand that there, there's a lot of detail and the alarm the Councilman Khalid raises is warranted. However, we have a lot of sites that would benefit from this. However, that doesn't mean we have to rush to judgment right now to approve something if some questions aren't answered. I think that that would be negligent of us.
Okay, so restate the motion, restate the motion on the floor.
Or answer his question.
Can I make a suggestion?
I can, I'll...
I would ask for us to move forward with the, with the agreement and ask that the city manager, if he adds additional facilities, that he just brings it back to the council.
That's what he said.
That was going to be my motion.
That was, that's what Mr. Baker said.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker said, I would like to restate my motion. I would like to move that we approve this agreement and if we expand beyond the two sites mentioned in the agreement, that we bring those recommendations back before council for approval.
Properly moved, the second. Any further discussion?
I would just simply ask that that language be put in the resolution versus the agreement. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, you got that, Madam, Madam Attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote, please. That passes.
Next item is number 14, council approval of an instructor and service agreement with Marissa Mathi, Mathi for ceramics at South Fulton Art Center.
Are we doing each one?
I thought we said as a group.
Okay, that's what I thought, Mr. Khalid.
Okay, items number 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 18 through 31, 14 through 31.
Right. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the instructor and service agreements for the South Fulton Art Center and the Southwest, the South Fulton Art Center, Southwest Art Center, items 14 through 31 as presented.
Properly moved, the second. We're in discussion.
Hi, so thank you for, thank you for allowing me to discuss these contracts. I understand the move from employees to independent contractors and the reestablishment of the 70-30 split. I, I have several friends that are instructors there. We all grew up here in the arts in Fulton County. The new aspect of this agreement is the requirement for the instructors to individually carry liability insurance that did not exist under Fulton County. I just wanted to find out what was the origin of this new addition.
That provision is a standard provision that has been in our instructor services contracts since we established it through the county, city attorney's office initially. It's for the protection of the city. I would defer to the city attorney to speak with that. We also, of course, have dialogue with Mr. Marcus Williams, our risk manager. It is, to my understanding, speaking with Mr. Williams and in speaking with our other instructors for zumba, karate, any number of different disciplines that we've used in our recreation division, as well as our youth athletic associations, youth athletic associations who are also required to carry that same insurance, that the cost is fairly nominal. Our volunteer parents in youth athletics are able to fold that into their registration and we believe that's possible with these instructor services contracts as well. It has not in any other instance been a roadblock or prohibitive in order, in order to offer these types of services under the agreement as constructed.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, will we be able to roll these into the fees? Whatever the fees are for the insurance, can they be rolled into the fees?
They can do that.
Yeah, you can do that administratively. There's nothing stopping you from doing that.
And would we do it or would, as independent contractors, would they do it?
Yeah, they would do it.
So they would pass those fees?
Yeah, they would pass, but I think the other, the very important part, and I know Mr. Phillips included it in our memo that we presented, is that Fulton County had some issues with these folks were not independent contractors. Because some of those things were not included, they had to bring them on as part-time staff and carry additional liability. We 100% plan to carry this as independent contractors. As such, they're required to carry that. That's one of the big differences.
As, as independent, this is just a tax question, as independent contractors, they will get 1099s? Are they responsible for paying their own taxes quarterly?
That's correct.
All right. Those are my questions.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Let's vote. That passes. I want to acknowledge the Commissioner Joe Kahn just walked in. Thank you for being here, Joe. All right. And go ahead.
Next item is council approval of amending Development Authority Resolution. Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Reeves.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve amending the Development Authority Resolution.
Second. Properly moved, the second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I spoke with my colleagues regarding this and I think that it was discussed that there was, would be, because there's a certain amount of years when it comes to those appointments, that one would be a four-year appointment and one would be a two-year appointment. I just don't remember which name that we agreed for the four and the two, Councilwoman Raul.
Does anybody know the answer to that?
I think Mercedes, I don't know the last name, was the two-year and Ivy was the four-year.
Do you know, Attorney?
That would be the clue.
Yes, I'm, I'm...
I don't remember the discussion to that extent, so I don't want to tell you I remember.
Well, no, I would like to amend it then to that if it's not already.
Are the members of that board staggered? Mr. Baker? Go ahead.
So you have, you have three members who are four-year terms and then you have four members who are two-year terms.
Okay.
And at this point, if you add two more, then you have the discretion to designate the, the term. So you would, by motion, just designate the term that they would have.
I have a question, Mayor. I'm going to keep. So Attorney Walker, this resolution that Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Reeves brought forth is this resolution you actually, it came from you and the terms that were set in the resolution came from you. And according to the state laws, either a two-year term or four-year term. There's no such thing as a one-year term.
That's not what I...
So is, are you asking for a one-year term?
No. Four or two?
No, it's a four or two.
Yeah. Four, that's what I said.
It's a four and a two.
That's what I said. I think you, I don't, I said two years or four years.
That's correct.
That's what I said.
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't hear him ask for a one-year term, but I'm not saying he didn't ask for that. I just said I didn't hear.
I mean, but this resolution came from you, so is there...
No, I didn't put a one-year term in there. There's no...
I did not say that. I said the terms that's set forth in this resolution came directly from you. This was, this was your resolution that came from you.
Can you defer to me?
The terms in there are arbitrary pursuant to state law. Whatever you want the terms to be, it's your discretion. If you want it to be two, it'll be two. Want it to be four?
Either one gets four and one gets two.
Right.
We don't have to have a lot of conversation about that.
You and Cory decide that. This is your...
I mean, Cory wants to say, well, I'll take two.
Yeah, exactly. I'll be four.
Cory, you can reoppose. All right, we got, let's vote. That passes. Next item, Madam Attorney.
Next item is council approval and second reading to amend FY '20 budget ordinance.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve FY '20 amended budget.
Second.
Second by Mr. Khalid, I think?
Cory.
Or Mr. Reed. The properly moved, the second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Mr. Baker.
Since this is a budget ordinance, are we allowed to make amendments to this budget? Because there were conversations about fun, funding for the Development Authority last meeting contingent upon these additional appointments. And if that's the case, I would ask that that be considered in that amendment as well. And I think that the city manager had a document regarding that, that request...
Mr. Manager, you want to weigh in on it?
Signed by the board. I think there was, well, I could actually explain, I recall that there was an initial amount, I think projected of about $150,000 annually, given at the, since we're at the mid-year, 75% of that budget would be allocated to the Development Authority and we would be included into, well, for the remainder of this year.
Mr. Manager, you go ahead.
Well, I did receive a request from the Development Authority to have considerations from the city to provide some budgetary support, both in this year and at least one additional year. I believe it's for two additional years that they provided. And so I know that that was going to be a conversation in a different form, but I have received that, that document.
And I believe that it was required as well or requested that we would, whether the Development Authority would provide reports to mayor and council as well regarding those funds.
Okay, Ms. Reed.
One of the things, I'll say from the record, I'm not, I'm not opposed, but I do think we need to get back to putting these boards in, operating under best practices. So I want to wait because I want the city attorney to hear, to hear this conversation.
Madam Attorney?
Before we take that up for consideration, we need to intergovernmental... Before we take that up for consideration, we need an intergovernmental agreement between the Southwood Development Authority and the city council and an update on where things are. The original budget, we have not, we allocated amount, we need a budget back. I think I would ask the city manager, the attorney, whoever, to put that on agenda for our next meeting with that information available, so we understand how we will work with and relate to the development authority.
I think people keep talking about the city manager and attorney. I think that Mr. Malazey.
I mean, whoever, everybody. But I'm saying, I mean, again, the class I went to is going to outline everything from staff and budget, all of those things, reporting, and we understand, so we're all on the same page. That's all I'm asking.
Got you.
So I do have an attorney.
I hear you.
Who is on standby to, to assist if the city wants to take that direction.
Is this a development?
Yeah, this is the attorney who will be, there's an attorney who will be representing the, the development authority, and then we have an attorney, the former general counsel from GMA, who I've already put in contact with the city manager if the city elects to move forward with the IGA. So it's just, it's the city's call.
I think that's perfect.
Okay, I heard, I heard Mr. Baker, then I go to Ms. Willis, and I conclude with Mr. Khalid.
So if you could, if that could come back with the recommendation for, oh, what?
For the budget, I support that.
No, let me get Mr. Baker, then get Ms. Willis, and we'll conclude with Mr. Khalid.
Well, I think that, um, we, we have our understanding that the development authority operates independently, so I am concerned too, the dynamics of what an IGA like that would look like, but at the same time, we did just add new members. I don't think that we took in any type of financial impact statement when we added those members. There's going to be several different things that need to take place with those new members to make sure that they're in compliance as well, from training, et cetera. And I think that Mr. Mayor even espoused itself in the last meeting that these funds are things that are normally given to development authorities in order for them to start and operate independently on their own. So when, depending on those dynamics of intergovernmental agreement, the reporting outside of that was something that was stated earlier, so I don't know how far or what that agreement would look like, given that this is something that is customary and there is information regarding that that has been provided.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Baker.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Willis?
Well, I'm not opposed to supporting the development authority, but the word independent is what it says, independent. So if you independent, you don't need our funds. But if we have to give you seed money to start, like Sandy Springs Development Authority, what they do is give a quarterly report on what was funded to them. Like most cities who are funded by their cities, they are very transparent. They put their financials out and they report to the council that's, that's funding them. So in fiscal '19, we gave this development authority $200,000. We didn't get any budget. We, there was no budget given to the public, so we don't know how that money was used. In fiscal '20, we gave the development authority $100,000. We have not received any budget. Now, that's what was in our budget.
That's not true.
And we have not received any accounting of that money. We don't know what's going on with that money, and as long as this city has to fund this development authority, I think it's no more than fair for the development authority to provide us budgets and financials on what money the city is giving this development authority and how it's being used and allocated. So I'm not opposed to supporting the development authority, but there should be financials that should come along with that. And Mr. Pollard, I think you understand what I'm saying.
Okay, now we conclude with Mr. Khalid.
So I, I guess my first question, I'll have to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Willis said, that payments of $300,000 have flowed from the city of South Fulton to the city of South Fulton's Development Authority. Mr. Malazey, has the city of South Fulton's Development Authority received $300,000 in payments from the city?
200, $200,000 has been allocated to development authority.
So have they, they, checks have been cut for that amount? They have, they have an account with $200,000 in it? I know, I know, because I know we've talked about this in budgets before, we allocate stuff, but then it doesn't mean that we've actually spent it. We've allocated $200,000 for a blighted property fund, but we have yet to knock down a house. So...
$200,000 has been given to development authority so far. My knowledge, the money has been spent on a place of meetings, food, and the list, I think, is the creation of the website. That's it. Beyond that, nothing has been done with that money, so it's still there.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to the chair in a second, but I do want to say that when we talk about best practices, the majority of the hundred or so development authorities and downtown development authorities throughout the state of Georgia actually receive annual disbursements.
That's my truth.
From their city. And, um, I, I do agree that we should have quarterly reports and that those things should be processed, which would mean that the development authority is going to need staff and offices. I just saw in your city manager's report, I mean, in your city finance report, Mr. Malazey, that we are spending twice as much on personnel as we spend on services. So personnel and, and buildings and rentals and all of those things are expensive, and I think that we should, I think that if we're going to support our development authority, that we do have to support it and that we should give it some annual funding and make sure that they have an office and staff to operate. And with that, I'm going to yield to Councilman Baker.
Thank you. I just would like to just clarify what my colleague, Councilwoman Willis, stated that was incorrect. There was not, the development authority of South Fulton was not in the budget for this year. It was not. So there was not $100,000 allotted to the development authority. There was $0 allotted for this budget year. As our CFO stated prior, there was an initial seed money of 200 initially, and as I stated, I think that it would be only appropriate that those reports come to mayor and council where it are made public. So there is a budget, and our CFO currently has that budget. He was there and he assisted, you know, thankfully, to create said budget that does exist. So when, when we take on new members and we just don't consider, you know, a cost that may impact it, just like, impact that, just like everything else that we have before any resolution or any ordinance is ever presented to mayor and council, there's always a financial impact statement. And I think that there will be a financial impact, and since we're doing this amendment, that's why I raised it. So outside of, I just want the attorney and city manager to hear me.
Attorney, city manager.
I was saying that outside of the fact that we currently just said that we will provide those reports, we have an upcoming retreat, we have new members that have to be a part of that polling and scheduling, and if we're going to make this budget amendment, given that you're going to get those reports, if it's the will of the council quarterly, I don't know why we need to hold on that, because this is exactly what was just espoused from Councilwoman Row that she said that it would, it would be required. Yes, CFO?
I want to make something clear. The money was allocated but has not been spent, and this money, we didn't write the check to give it to them. It's still in the general fund, it's still with us.
Yeah.
Because until you sign the IGA between the development authority and the city, there's nothing that he, I have to do it, because I am operating under the city, I'm not operating under the development authority. So unless you make that signature, unless you make that IGA agreement, so the city still has got that money, whatever the balance is, it's still under the control of the city.
Right.
Copy, and it is currently under control of the city, but what I was advising is that we can't move forward if we're independent, as Councilwoman Willis said. We can't move forward hiring staff or moving forward in any type of personnel if we don't have the security in knowing where the next dollar is going to come from. I mean, if we're solely independent and we have to look forward to the bond deals that we create, we have people who come in with less than worthy bond opportunities. You don't, we wouldn't want our new authority just because we're in need of money, accepting deals or reaching out for deals that we don't necessarily, that are undesirable in our city, just because we don't have seed money. So I just ask that the council.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I yield back to Councilman Khalid.
His time is up.
I yielded, so how was my?
Yield your time, Dan. What's the motion, Madam Court?
The motion is to approve the FY '20 budget ordinance amendment.
Second.
It's been properly moved.
It was, it was moved by Councilmember Gilley, seconded by Councilmember Reeves.
Let's, let's vote, please. That passes. I accept the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
But can I speak to that? We, we do need to make sure that this development authority has. I still want the intergovernmental agreement and the understanding, this, I just went through the training, this is really, we ain't doing that because you just spoken. I'm just saying, in fairness to them, they need to be able to operate. This is standard process. You know this, attorney, which is why I'm assuming you was teeing these people up. Can you bring it back so we can give them what they need to function?
Yeah, the attorney who is there, she's ready on the table, and I will tell her it's a council direction for her to continue those.
Can we have a motion on that from the board so that she is clear that she is authorized to do that?
I don't. We have, excuse me, Madam, Madam, Madam Attorney, we have already made a vote, right?
Yes, you, you have already authorized me to, well, I, without the building discussions that we had, that we're allowed to have in private, pursuant to our prior discussions regarding personnel and how much the dues to the city authorities would be, we've established that we're going to get an attorney to help you coordinate that IGA.
That's right.
Okay.
That's what you're gonna do.
Okay.
Okay, I take, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, two second. All right, all right, two second, you gotta raise your hand. All right, the properly moved the second, all those in favor, meeting's adjourned.